Aloha, kakaiaka. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Hawaii County Council. We are located here in Kona, the West Hawaii Civic Center. This is our 13th session. Today's date is May 19th. Current time is 9:05 a.m. Please turn off your cell phones or at least put it on the silent mode. Mahalo. First off, we have the invocation from Pastor Dean Stanley of Kona Baptist. Oh, we have two. Double the prayers.
Father, you would guide and direct every person that is here, Father, and every word that is spoken. Father, we're thankful for you and we're thankful, Father, for your leadership and we're thankful for your people, Father, that you've called to lead our city. Now, Father, I pray that your hand of blessing be upon this meeting. In Jesus' name, amen.
Mahalo. Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Mr. Chung?
He's currently on the conference call right now.
Ms. David?
Here.
Ms. Eoff? Mr. Ilagon?
Present.
Mr. Onishi?
Excuse.
Uh, Mr. Palaika?
Here.
Ms. Poindexter?
Here.
Ms. Willie?
Here.
Chair Kanuha?
Here.
Chair Kanuha, you have, um, seven members present at the time.
Thank you very much. Um, I did get a memo from Councilmember Onishi. He is, uh, won't be available to attend this meeting today as he is at the Western Interstate Region Conference on Kauai. He is one of the board members for the National Association of Counties Board of Directors. So he's currently attending that meeting. And, Mr., and, uh, also, we have Councilmember Palaika from, that is videoconferencing in Hilo, and he is also gonna be heading to the Western Interstate Region Conference this afternoon, so he needs to fly out of Hilo at 1:00 or in the afternoon. He is currently on the Board of, the Board of Directors for the Western Interstate Region as well. So aloha, Danny, from Hilo.
Okay. Ms. Willie, may you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Thank you, Ms. Willie. I don't see any certificates today, so I think we can move on to statements from the public on agenda items. We'll go to Hilo. Aloha, Hilo. Is there anybody that is wishing to testify?
Good morning, Chair. We have one testifier this morning.
Thank you very much. Uh, Paho'a, aloha, Paho'a. Anybody there wishing to testify? Paho'a? Okay, we'll move on. Ka'o, aloha, Ka'o. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. We have no testifiers, but we do have people that would like to listen today.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, then we'll go to Waimea. Aloha, Waimea.
Aloha, Chair. Uh, we do not have any testifiers for council today.
Thank you. Okay, North Kohala. Aloha, North Kohala.
Aloha, Chair. We have no testifiers today.
Okay. Thank you. I'll go back to Paho'a. Is there anybody in Paho'a?
Sorry, yes. Good morning, Chairman. Um, there's zero testifiers today.
Okay. Thank you. And I think we have one here in Hilo. I mean, Hilo, Kona. Um, I'll go with the person from Hilo. Uh, you can bring up your first testifier.
Thank you, Chair. First testifier is Ms. W. Mapuana Waipa, representing Keokah Community Association, speaking in support of Resolution 188-15.
Aloha ina'um, lala o kea au puni au hava'i ni. Um, my name is Mapuana Waipa, and I come representing the Keokah Community Association and in support of Resolution 188-15. Um, we are donating, or we would like to donate, um, value for video surveillance at the Kona na'kohau in Keokah. And it's to help to provide safety and, um, safety more so for our children and families that utilize the facilities. Um, we hear that the surveillance camera has been down for a while, and we would like, on the community level, to ko'ua in that matter. There's approximately 2,000 people that utilize the facilities daily, and it's anywhere from schools, hula troops, Tahitian troops, um, sports, um, and our kupuna program. And so, on the community's behalf, we would like to, um, mahalo all those who ko'ua that. And for special events, we can go up to 3,000 people per day. So it's a needed, um, a needed venue for our community. So mahalo.
Mahalo for your testimony. Okay, we're coming here to Kona, and we have Auntie Elizabeth Lee. Make sure you, uh, yeah, bring it close, and you can press the button on the bottom.
Aloha, Joe. Mahalo. Mahalo, Karen. Mahalo, the county of Hawaii, for giving me this opportunity to come and share. I thank the county for helping us create a beautiful park for the community. And thanks to Karen for making, helping make this reality. And it is for the use of the community, and the use of the communities to help take care of it. And God bless each and every one of you folks and for making it a beautiful corner. And I'm so proud as kupuna of the area, and this is something for me to see what is developing in here. Never knew it's gonna be the way it is today, but mahalo. God bless you all.
Mahalo, Auntie Elizabeth. Uncle Reggie, did you want to testify? And we'll, we'll write your name afterwards.
Okay. Well, we, I just wanna thank everybody. Uh, you know, this was a battle down there. It wasn't anything easy, but, you know, the, the common goal was to create what we have today. And with, uh, help from the county, the developer, and the community, this became a reality. Uh, and we're happy to see the usage that we have. And the revenue is bringing to the county and the facility itself. We are, Konaiki has a great leader, and he's the one that, that's, um, that pushes us into, into, uh, into this direction that we have. So, uh, thank you to the county.
Mahalo for both of you. Uncle Reggie, can you make sure to turn off the microphone? Mahalo for your testimony. Okay, um, I'm gonna ask again if there's anybody else wishing to testify. Please let me know now. Hearing or seeing none, okay, I will move on. And we will start with the communications. Or you know what? Let me go first to, uh, Mr. Clerk, Bill 38. Real quickly.
Bill 38 amends ordinance number 08-115, which amended ordinance number 93-36, which reclassified lands from agricultural 20 acres, A20A, agricultural 10 acres, A10A, and agricultural 3 acres, A3A, to residential and agricultural 1 acre, RA1A. Ekukaua first, South Hilo, Hawaii, covered by tax map keys 240820015658 through 61. Applicant Moani'ala Holdings LLC, area 171.84 acres. The Winward Planning Commission forwards this favorable recommendation for this amendment to change of zone ordinance number 08-115, which would, one, modify the timing of water commitment payments; two, grant a time extension to secure final subdivision approval; three, modify road construction requirements for Kauailani Street and Kupalau Street extensions; and four, update fair share contribution rates, including considerations for potential changes to credits associated with roadway improvements. Introduced by Mr. Ilagon by request.
Mr. Ilagon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to approve Bill 38.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Ilagon, seconded by Ms. David. Any discussion? Hearing or seeing, oh, Mr. Ilagon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to suspend the rules for voice vote regarding.
No need to suspend. We can.
No need?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Ilagon. Any other discussion? Hearing or seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? That is two, eight ayes. Motion passes. Okay. Uh, Mr. Clerk, we can go to the top. Communication 293.
Communication 293, nomination of Stephen D. Lopez to Liquor Commission for Mayor William P. Kanuei dated April 20, 2015. Submitting for the council's review and confirmation of the above nomination.
May I have a motion to approve the nomination of Stephen Lopez to the Liquor Commission?
So moved, second.
It's been moved by Ms. Eoff, seconded by Ms. David. Ms. Eoff, discussion?
Okay, um, I don't know if Shar in Hilo.
And do we have Mr. Lopez there in, in Kona?
He's gonna come up to the table.
Okay, great. Good morning, Chair, members of the council. Mayor Kanuei's nominee from Council District 8 to the Hawaii County Liquor Commission is Mr. Stephen D. Lopez. He's a 70-year resident of Hawaii. He retired in 2007 from Hewlett Packard Company, Inc., where he was a project manager, process improvement consultant. He also worked as a legislative research specialist for former Angel, Councilman Angel Pilago. Mr. Lopez is a state deputy for the Hawaii Knights of Columbus. He's a transition director for the Labmen Triathlon, a timing director for the Ironman World Championship, and a special Olympics coach. He states that he's not affiliated with any political party, and if confirmed, he will serve a term that ends on December 31st of 2018. He's filling a term that has been vacant since December 31st of 2013.
Mr. Lopez, would you like to say a few words? Be, um, introduce yourself to us.
Okay, thank you. Steve Lopez. Good morning, Chair Kanuha, council members. All of a sudden, I drew a blank. You all, you all know me as more as my Hawaiian gifted name, Kavenna. I'm happy to be here. Uh, I've missed working with the, uh, legislation, legislature, and interfacing with the public, and I think the Liquor Commission affords me that opportunity to get back into the mix with, uh, county ordinances and interface with the public, which I enjoy very much.
Thank you. Yes, I, um, I've missed working with you too, and, um, I think, um, it's, it's good to see that you're gonna be back doing community service and working with the county government in this capacity. So, um, I support your nomination and urge my council members to do so as well.
Thank you, Ms. Eoff. Uh, Ms. David?
Aloha, Mr. Lopez.
Aloha.
That sounds weird, Mr. Lopez. But anyway. Um, congratulations, and I wanna say that I wholly support your nomination. And the years I've worked with you, you've proven to be a very professional and dedicated, um, values that you have. Will do well as, um, in this appointment to the Liquor Commission, and I wish you the best.
Mahalo.
Ms. Poindexter?
Yeah, I'd also like to say thank you for your willingness to serve and that I think you are such a valuable asset for them to have on that commission. So, thank you very much.
Mahalo.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Willie?
Um, yeah, congratulations and thanks for, um, willingness to serve. And, um, I wondered what else you're doing. Uh, and I'll tell you why I'm asking before you feel you have to, what you answer.
What else I'm doing?
What else? I just, I mean, you know, um, well, I'm just looking for some additional volunteer support. And now that you've retired, and, um, I don't know how much time this commission's gonna take, but, um, perhaps after you see how demanding it is, and I don't know whether you've gone on to another chapter of life in a new profession, or else I might try to impose on you to give me assistance on something I'm working on.
Well, thank you, Ms. Willie. I appreciate that, uh, confidence you have. Uh, when I found, I found, well, I actually retired in 2007, and then I came to the county because of my love for Angel Pilago and worked with him, and, uh, it was, uh, it was a gratifying experience. Four years and nine months with, uh, with the county. And, uh, once I was not reappointed in December, I kinda embraced retirement, actually, and found that, as so many retirees have said, I don't know how I ever found time to work with all the things that I'm doing. So, uh, I am, I'm in my second year. Just re-elected as the CEO of the Hawaii State Knights of Columbus. So I travel the state, and it includes American Samoa. So I'll be working with that group, uh, in the second year. That keeps me quite, quite busy. I also, in the, just started the second year of a new home that I've lived in for years, so I've got landscaping and irrigation and plantings and so on and so forth. Uh, and now, the Liquor Commission seemed to be, uh, it came open, and it seemed like a nice fit for me, again, in terms of my interest for community service. So, uh, it's always good to stretch. I enjoy being busy, and, uh, my, my first passion is Knights of Columbus. And, uh, I'm very open to talking with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Willie. I hope that's not a condition of your vote, but. Okay, uh, any other discussion, council members? Okay, I just wanted to say, you know, mahalo, Kavenna, for coming back and, uh, volunteering your time. I know you did so much in the legislature, in our, um, department, and you're extremely competent to be, uh, back here again. So mahalo for all your service and for everything you do in the community.
Mahalo, Chair. Thank you.
Okay, um, all in favor of approving the nomination, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? That's eight ayes. Motion passes. Uh, congratulations.
Thank you.
Do we wanna take like a one-minute recess to, or do you wanna stay for a little while so we can congratulate you afterwards? Or you gotta go? Yeah. We'll take a one-minute recess and then we'll congratulate you. Okay, recess. Okay, we're coming out of recess. And, Mr. Clerk? Communication 294.
Communication 294, nomination of Robert A. Becker to the Fire Commission for Mayor William P. Kanuei dated April 20, 2015. Submitting for the council's review and confirmation of the above nomination.
May I have a motion to approve the nomination of Robert A. Becker to the Fire Commission? You have a second?
So move.
Second? Okay. That was a motion by Mr. Palaika, I think, and the second by Ms. David. Okay, Shar, you can introduce your nominee.
Okay. Uh, Mayor Kanuei's nominee from Council District 6 to the County Fire Commission is here with us in Hilo, Mr. Robert A. Becker. Mr. Becker has over 40 years of local, regional, national, and international fire emergency management experience. He's the current deputy team leader of Volcano Cert and former member of the California State Firefighters Association, a Southern Calif, the Southern California Association of Foresters and Fire Wardens, and their International Association of Wildland Fire. Mr. Becker states that he's not affiliated with any political party, and if confirmed, he will fill a vacant term that will expire on December 31st of 2018.
Thank you, Shar. Um, discussion, council members? Uh, Ms. David?
Aloha, and good morning, Mr. Becker. Thank you very much for volunteering to serve on this commission. Based on your expertise and, um, knowledge, I believe you will be a great asset to the Fire Commission from District 6. So congratulations and welcome. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. David. Mr. Becker, I just wanna give you the opportunity to say a few words, um, if you would like.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning, everybody. A couple months ago, I read in the paper an article where the mayor stated that he was having difficulty of getting citizens to come forward to serve on commissions and committees. And I thought with my background and my, uh, experience in, uh, fire and emergency management that I would, um, come forward. And so I did contact, uh, Councilwoman, uh, David about that position. I think all of us have a certain level of civic responsibility to, uh, be part of the community if we can. And, uh, like I said, I think I have the background and experience to be an asset to the commission, so that's why I came forward and volunteered.
Thank you very much for that. Any other discussion, council members?
If a mayor, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Mr. Palaika.
I'm certainly gonna be supporting your nomination, Mr. Becker, seeing your credentials and your well-fire management and response management skills. I think we're very lucky to have you, and I wish you all the best.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Palaika. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing or seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? That's eight ayes. Motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Becker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair and Council.
Okay, Mr. Clerk? Communication 295.
Communication 295, nomination of Kanuei A. Wilson to the Water Board for Mayor William P. Kanuei dated April 20, 2015. Submitting for the council's review and confirmation of the above nomination.
May I have a motion to approve the nomination of Kanuei A. Wilson to the Water Board?
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Poindexter, seconded by Ms. David. Uh, Shar, you can introduce your nominee.
Mayor Kanuei's nominee from Council District 5 to the County of Hawaii Water Board is Ms. Kanuei A. Wilson. She's a lifelong resident of Hawaii, presently an education officer at Kamehemé Schools, Hawaii. Ms. Wilson is a member of the Keokah Community Foundation, the Namaka o Papa Hanau Moku Akeha. She's a past member of the Keokah Community Association and the Ka'oumeke Ka'el School Board. Ms. Wilson states that she's not affiliated with any political party, and if confirmed, she will serve a term to end on December 31st of 2018. She replaces Dylan Perry, whose term ended on December 31st of 2013.
Mahalo, Shar. Uh, I'm gonna open it up to you, Kanuei. Aloha, Kanuei. And I'll let you have a few words.
Aloha, Chairman Kanuha and County Council members. Uh, my name is Kanuei Suganumo Wilson, born and raised here in Hilo, Hawaii. I'm honored to, uh, be here before you folks to represent my district. It's always been my passion to be a servant leader for my community and found that this is a great opportunity to be very actively engaged in leadership and helping to serve my community. So mahalo nui.
Mahalo, Kanuei. Uh, I'm gonna open up to the council members. Any discussion, council members? Okay, I just wanted to say I'm extremely happy that you're gonna be on this commission. I know you do a lot in the community. I've worked with you in the past. And really glad you're volunteering to, uh, be part of, uh, this commission. And I know you'll do an awesome job. We're dealing with a lot of issues, especially here in Kona, so I hope you get, uh, the background. I know you know a lot about what's going on with the Ke'ohoa Aquifer. So definitely heavily read up on, upon that, and if you haven't, not already done so. So, thanks, Kanuei, and looking forward to seeing you serve.
Mahalo nui, Chair Kanuha.
Okay, any other discussion, council members? Hearing or seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Any oppose? That's eight ayes. Motion passes. Uh, again, we wish we could be there, Kanuei, but congratulations. Okay, I... Okay. Mr. Clerk? Communication 296.
Communication 296, nomination of Ryan N. Kohatsu to the Game Management Advisory Commission for Mayor William P. Kanuei dated April 20, 2015. Submitting for the council's review and confirmation of the above nomination.
May I have a motion to approve the nomination of Ryan N. Kohatsu to the Game Management Advisory Commission?
So move. Second.
It's been moved by Ms. David, seconded by Ms. Poindexter. Shar, aloha, Shar. You can introduce your nominee.
Okay, Mayor Kanuei's nominee to, from Council District 3 to the County of Hawaii Game Management Advisory Commission is Mr. Ryan N. Kohatsu. He is a lifelong resident of Hawaii and a resource planner at Hawaii Electric Light Company. Mr. Kohatsu is a volunteer DLNR hunter education instructor. He states that he's not affiliated with any political party, and if confirmed, he'll serve a term to end on December 31st of 2019, replacing Anthony Sylvester, who resigned.
Mahalo, Shar. Uh, Mr. Kohatsu, if you'd like to say a few words before we open it up to discussion?
Okay, yeah. Aloha, Chair Kanuha and the County Council. Thank you very much for this opportunity to represent, uh, my district and replacing Tony Sylvester's position. I'd like to just share that, uh, being a hunter education instructor, uh, on this island, I see that, uh, hunting and fishing is a very integral part of the lifestyle of the county of Hawaii, um, maybe perhaps more than the, uh, cap, our capital island of Oahu. And, uh, I think it's important that we maintain those things for our children. And I, I see the youth in our classes all the time, and I see dwindling, uh, resources of hunting and fishing as well. And, uh, I feel it is my civic duty to, uh, help maintain those things. And, uh, I hope to serve that and do that well. Thank you very much.
Mahalo for that. Uh, I'll open it up to council members for discussion. Any discussion? Okay, just would like to say mahalo for volunteering and look forward to working with you on this commission. So, um, all in favor of the nomination? Approval of nomination, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? That's eight ayes. Motion passes. Uh, congratulations, Mr. Kohatsu.
Hey, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Clerk? Next on the agenda, communication 297.
Communication 297, nomination of Arthur F. Buckman to the Police Commission for Mayor William P. Kanuei dated April 29, 2015. Submitting for the council's review and confirmation of the above nomination.
May I have a motion to approve the nomination of Arthur F. Buckman to the Police Commission?
So move.
You have a second? It's been moved by Mr. Palaika and seconded by Ms. David. Uh, Shar?
Mayor, Mayor Kanuei's nominee from Council District 5 to the County of Hawaii Police Commission is Mr. Arthur F. Buckman. He's a 30-year resident of Hawaii, a Department of Defense retiree, and is presently self-employed as an, as an orchid hybridizer. Is that the right hybridizer? Hybridizer. Mr. Buckman is a former member of the State Invasive Species Rapid Response Team, former chair of the Sierra Club Toxic Waste Committee, passport member of Lion Aparito, and passport member and officer of various orchid societies. He states that he's not affiliated with any political party, and if confirmed, he'll fill a vacant term to end on December 31st of 2018.
Mahalo, Shar. Aloha, Mr. Buckman. Uh, would you like to say a few words before we open it up to council?
Yes, I'd like to start off by saying aloha and good morning, all. As you heard, I'm a 30-year resident of Hawaii. I escaped from New Jersey in 1985, and I, uh, re-escaped and relocated from Oahu to Hilo approximately five years ago. Um, I started my government career as a chief of land management for the Army, and that included volunteering and running the local conservation officer program. Uh, since leaving New Jersey, I rose to command level where all of the conservation programs for natural and cultural resources in the Pacific came under me for both the Air Force and the Army. I took a fairly early retirement in 2009 to take care of my mother. I took a fairly early retirement in 2009 to take care of my mother. At that point, most of my volunteering had ended, and I am now available to start using my brain again, although there's a lot to be said for all those reruns of Golden Girls I watched with mom. I look forward to being of any assistance I can. I have a personal interest in military conservation officer and police security folks and their families. You see a lot of hardships, especially when the spouse deploys of work with those folks and with adjacent municipalities on occasion, and I look forward to any use you folks can put me to. Thank you.
Mahalo, Mr. Buckman. Council members, discussion?
If I may?
Yep, Mr. Palaika.
You know, I'm so happy for Mr. Buckman. I've known him personally for a long time, lives in my district, but he's been very humble. Mr. Buckman oversaw a lot of... was responsible for working with the late, great Senator Inouye in developing the brown tree snake programs that to this day have kept, thank goodness, the brown tree snake out of our islands. I know he's a conscientious man. I know he lost his mom recently, but I think he's a very good fit, well-qualified, very adept at policies and procedures, especially with law enforcement and military service. I think he's gonna be a very good asset to our Police Commission, and I just wanted to wish him all the best. Thank you, Art, for serving and volunteering.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Palaika. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing or seen none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That's eight ayes, motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Buckman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, Communication 305.
Communication 305, nomination of Keith F. Unger to the Leeward Planning Commission from Mayor William P. Canoi dated April 29, 2015. Submitting for the council's review and confirmation of the above nomination.
We have a motion to approve the nomination of Keith Unger to the Leeward Planning Commission.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Willie, seconded by Ms. David. Shar, you can open it up.
Okay, is Mr. Unger in Kona today?
Yes, he is.
Okay. Mayor Canoi's nominee from the South Kona District to the Hawaii County Leeward Planning Commission is Mr. Keith F. Unger. He's a lifelong resident of Hawaii, the general manager of McCandless Land and Cattle Company, LLC. Mr. Unger is a member of the Hawaii Bureau Council, a board member of the Connoisseur and Water Conservation District, the chair of the Land Use Issues Committee of the Hawaii State Cattlemen's Council, and an advisor to the Hawaii Island Land Trust. He states that he's not affiliated with any political party. Mr. Unger was previously confirmed to this commission in May of 2014 to fill a term that expired on March 31st of this year. Hawaii County Charter, Section 13-4C, states that members of any board or commission appointed for a term of two years or less shall be eligible to succeed themselves for an additional full term. With this confirmation today, Mr. Unger is eligible to serve a full term of five years that will end on March 31st of 2020.
Thank you, Shar. Aloha, Keith. If you'd like to say a few words before we open it up, make sure you turn on the microphone. There's a bottom panel.
Aloha, Kakahiaka Kako, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. Thank you for this opportunity to continue as a commissioner on the Leeward Planning Commission. As general manager of Ranch in South Kona, I bring agricultural and environmental perspective to the commission. As a business owner in Kailua Kona, I have that perspective as well, and I look forward to continuing as a commissioner on the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Mahalo. Discussion council members, Ms. Willie.
Thank you, Mr. Unger, for continuing your service, and I appreciate your support for environmental issues. I realize you're a large landowner and cattle person, but I also see that you've been involved in a number of environmental issues. And I say that really just hoping for people to be on that commission, to have, some of them to have some background in environmental. And I see that you have been involved in the Carbon Offset Program, and is that the Ecosystem Restoration Association?
It's not with that particular group. I'm working with a new forest out of Sacramento, San Francisco, and we are looking at a carbon project on McCandless Ranch. It is a pioneer project. Hawaii is behind the time when it comes to carbon market. It's active in California right now. And the gentleman and the company that I'm working with now is in the California market, and we're working with Nature Conservancy, State of Hawaii, and McCandless as a candidate to bring Hawaii into that market. And it has to do with, it's a science-based project, as you know, and the trees in California are a lot more studied and well-known as far as their growth and their carbon emissions in Hawaii. We have Ohia and Koas our main canopy, and so studies are ongoing right now as far as what are their coefficients, what are their growth numbers. And it's an intense process, and we've been at it for probably three years now. And I get updated probably every six months, but I think there's enough support here, and the state is on board, Nature Conservancy is on board, we're a candidate, and so really the three of us are pushing that process.
Right, and just for the public's benefit, so my interest is, it's a landowner with a large forest, and how can one at the same time have a business and make some, you know, promote that so that it's not, the only way to make money is to cut them down? So that by doing this offset program, it allows them to preserve their native forest and at least get some economical benefit from it, or that's...
Absolutely.
Not by little bit of knowledge.
Absolutely, and that's all, it's all part of ecosystem services, trying to value these, everybody wants fresh water, everybody wants view planes, everybody wants clean air. The problem is, for the public, when it comes time to pay for it, they have a hard time quantifying it. And so ecosystem services is a way of actually quantifying what is the value of fresh air? What is the value of filtered water? What is the value of a view plane? And what's interesting about, and so that's a difficult process. But what the carbon process is doing, that's actually quantifying what is the value of clean air through sequestering. So it's kind of an exciting process, and we're glad to be part of it.
Okay, well, I'm glad to hear that. I also noticed that you've spent time on endangered species, or crows, alala, and having had a pet crow, Frank, for many years, for a number of years. Anyway, I just always have an affinity for the crows and the crows here. So thank you for your environmental...
You're welcome. I would caution anybody talking about endangered crows on the mainland. People will look at you like you're absolutely crazy. But the fact is, we have an incredibly unique species over here, the alala, and I'm on the alala recovery team, and we're working, and DLNR is in the, I don't know if you're familiar, but DLNR is in the process of their first release in the Kau'ou Forest in 2016. Funding has just been made available, so I think we're gonna have our first release since 2008, which occurred on McCandless Ranch.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Willie. Ms. David?
Aloha, Mr. Unger.
Aloha, Councilwoman.
I'm very happy that you have decided to continue your service. I'm especially happy of your broad range of involvement in the barrel council, the environment, as Ms. Willie has stated, and just being in the ranching and ag industry for years. McCandless family has been in that industry for years. So I believe that your other involvements in different areas is what I support for members on any commission, to have a wide variety of experiences as much as possible, like you have. So I'm very grateful that you are staying on, and I will support your nomination gladly. Mahalo.
Thank you.
Mahalo. Thank you, Ms. Yoff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Unger, for willingness to serve. I know the Planning Commission is one of the more time-intensive commissions to serve on. There's a lot of background reports and studying that you have to do, but I've watched several Planning Commission meetings, and I've appreciated your work. And one thing I just would like to ask at this time, because I think we've been missing the opportunity to really connect the goals of the CDP Action Committee with Planning Commission decisions, so that by the time some things come to the council, we would have a more full picture. And I'm not sure how you could assist us in that, but I've been trying to figure out how the relationship actually could be made stronger. And so there's a little bit more of a consistent pattern of discussion between all three of these agencies. So if you have any ideas on that, you could say something now, or I just wanted to put that out there.
Right, and I think we've talked about that after several meetings, and it's a great point. I mean, we all have to be working on the same, on the same agenda, and I know the community, the community development plan for me as a commissioner on the Planning Commission right now is a great tool because it gives us all direction. And so I certainly support using that as a first and foremost tool in guiding these decisions that we, as a community, are making. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Yoff. Any other discussion? Just real quickly, I fully support your nomination. As Ms. Yoff said, like, for myself, I want to speak for myself, I rely heavily upon your guys' recommendations. I go to a lot of your meetings. We deal a lot with rezoning, so it's really important that I know exactly what happened during the Planning Commission, and just understand that what you guys do is very vital and very important for what we do as a council. So just mahalo for all your hard work. And I just wanted to give you a real quick opportunity to say a few words. Just kind of explain, how has the last two years gone on the Planning Commission?
I've only been on it for probably four months.
Okay.
Yeah.
Last four months.
Yeah, it's been, yeah, four months. It's been interesting. It's been a learning experience, and it's been good. I mean, it's, it's, there are, I guess, in a step-down mode, we rely a lot on the Planning Department's reports and recommendations, but I'm a firm believer in reading those reports, reading the recommendations, and then really taking a look at the situation and coming up with my own opinion as far as what exactly is happening, and being able to voice that opinion. So I think the Planning Department is a great, is a really, and they're supportive. You know, I have come out in opposition to one of the recommendations, and it was very businesslike, and so it is, it is a process, and as a community member, it's an important process, not only dealing with the community, but then with you all as a council. We're right in the middle of it, and so I definitely understand the importance of the position and look forward to continuing, you know, applying whatever monocoque I can to the process.
Thanks for that. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing or seen none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's eight ayes, motion passes. Congratulations.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Can we just shake your hand real quickly to congratulate you? We'll take a brief recess. So that motion passed, and now we're on to Communication 306.
Communication 306, nomination of James G. Fritz to the Environmental Management Commission from Mayor William P. Canoi dated April 29, 2015. Submitting for the council's review and confirmation of the above nomination.
We have a motion to approve the nomination of James G. Fritz to the Environmental Management Commission, moved by Ms. Willie, seconded by Ms. Yoff. Aloha, Shar.
Aloha. Is Mr. Fritz in Kona?
Yes, he is.
Oh, yes, okay, because we had been, we didn't know if he was gonna be there or not. We tried to get in touch with him. Mayor Canoi's nomination from Council District Nine to the Hawaii, the County of Hawaii Environmental Management Commission is Mr. James G. Fritz. He's a 30-year resident of Hawaii and a self-employed roofing contractor, the owner of Kohala Roofing. Mr. Fritz is a past president of the Rotary Club of North Hawaii. He's a volunteer fireman and a board member of the Karai High YMCA Sailing School. Mr. Fritz states that he's not affiliated with any political party, and it confirmed he will serve a term to expire on December 31st of 2019.
Mahalo, Shar. Mr. Fritz, if you'd like to introduce yourself and say a few words?
Aloha, and good morning to you all. I'm touched by what a big deal you're making out of becoming a commissioner. I had no idea. It's kind of an unsung position. But thinking about what to say, listening to all these other people that will be serving as commissioners, particularly with solid waste, is, what I really want to say is, it never goes away. And being a user of our waste process daily as a contractor here on the island, I just want to know more about it, and I want to get more involved, and I'm hoping that I can make a difference to hopefully see that these products are a resource and not something to just be covered up and thrown away. Do you have any questions for me?
Mahalo. I'm gonna open it up to Ms. Willie.
Okay, yeah, thank you, James, for volunteering, and I'm really glad to get someone, additional person on this commission, because they've been, out of the past three months, they've only been able to meet once because of a quorum issue. And we are at a challenging time, sort of moving forward, as you said, towards how do we make solid waste really a resource? And I think one of the challenging areas does have to do with construction. And I think California is leading the way. In fact, someone from Southern California called and said they're now, with all of their demolition and contracting, they're able to recycle a great deal of that, something 90% sorting out what is really hazardous. But, so I really look forward to your being there and helping us work through these different waste streams, and how can we make, you know, make the world a better place at the same time, keep it an efficient system. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Willie. Any other, oh, Mr. Iligan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Fritz, this is a very important commission that I feel regarding all the commissions in the County of Hawaii. One of the question I was hoping you could investigate while you're in this commission is, how long do we have until we have to close that landfill in Hilo? That's always been the question, and I don't really know myself. If you can find out and provide an answer for us, or provide an answer for me, that would be great. Thank you.
Yeah. I've lived on three different islands here in the state, and it's the same process, you know, throw it in a hole and cover it up. So, you know, my initial reaction to your question is minutes, you know? We don't have... We don't have that long, so we really need to be looking at other resources to deal with it. So, thank you for your concern.
Thank you, Mr. Iligan. Any other discussion? Just real quickly, I look forward to working with you on your commission. I'm glad more members are being nominated to this commission. As Ms. Willie has said, they haven't been able to meet in, I don't know how long, and we keep on returning, we keep on getting bills back to us with a negative recommendation because the commission hasn't been able to meet. So I'm glad you're going to be on this commission, and hopefully you can dedicate that time to going to the meetings. I know it's a real problem. It is a volunteer, these all are volunteer commissions, so it's really difficult for everybody to get there. But as Mr. Iligan said, it is a really important commission. We have been working extremely hard with the administration about a lot of these issues that we're dealing with. So looking forward to seeing you serve, and mahalo for volunteering.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm committed.
Awesome. Awesome to hear that. Okay, and council members, all in favor of the nomination of Mr. Fritz, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's eight ayes, motion passes. Congratulations. If we could just shake your hand real quickly. I won't go into a recess. I will take a recess, brief recess.
Shar, you look beautiful today.
Okay, we are coming out of recess. Mahalo for being so patient with us. Okay, Mr. Clerk, Communication 307.
Communication 307, nomination of Leningrad Ilarianov to the Water Board from Mayor William P. Kanoi, dated April 29, 2015, submitting for the council's review and confirmation of the above nomination.
We have a motion to approve the nomination of Leningrad Ilarianov to the Water Board.
So moved. Second?
It's been moved by Ms. Willie, seconded by Ms. Poindexter. Shar, you can introduce your nominee, please.
Mr., I think Mr. Ilarianov is there in Kona. I believe I see him in the.
Yes, he's here.
Mayor Kanoi's nominee from Council District Nine to the County of Hawaii Water Board is Mr. Leningrad Ilarianov. He's a lifelong resident of Hawaii. He was a member of the Hawaii County Police Department from 1965 to 1994, and from 1998 to 2004, Mr. Ilarianov served on the Hawaii County Council. He's a cultural advisor for the Pohaku Loa Training Area, and he states that he's not affiliated with any political party. He confirmed he will serve a term to end on December 31 of 2019.
Mahalo, Shar. Mr. Ilarianov, would you like to say a few words, please, and introduce yourself? Make sure the microphone is on, though.
Okay. My name is Leningrad Ilarianov. I wish to you aloha kakahiaka. I'd like to explain what it means first, because it's so often misunderstood. Aloha is comprised of two words. It draws a picture, alo and ha. Alo is one person facing the other. So I'm facing you, that's alo. And ha is life or breath. So when you say aloha, I'm facing you with life. Kakahiaka, where the Hawaiians used to eat poi, they all ate for the same bowl, and after they finished, they used their index finger and scraped the poi that's hanging on the side, so it ends up in the middle. That's kahi. Aka is shadows. So when you say aloha kakahiaka, kakahiaka means when the shadows are scraped away, like in the morning. So it does not mean good morning. It just, I'm facing you with good feelings when the shadows are being scraped away. Okay, that's over. But I'm a, I'm a born and raised in Hawaii, born and raised in Kaua, actually. Grew up there with the College of the Meniere, came back to Hawaii, joined the police department, couldn't find a job in the other district but Waimea, so I moved to Waimea where my mother was from. And worked there until I retired, and now I am a, I work at the Waimea Nature Park and Waimea Trails and Greenways. I work with both groups. And if you have never been to the nature park at Waimea or the trails, you got to go see it.
Mahalo.
That's my commercial for the day.
Ms. Willie.
Okay, Leningrad, I have a quiz for you. How many different words in Hawaiian are there for the word rain?
Rain?
Mm-hmm. You told me this once. At the Outdoor Circle meeting, you discussed this.
You know, there's more than I know of.
Okay.
But ua is rain, and then there's different types of rain.
Right.
And the rain that we have in Waimea, uhiwai, that's a real fine, fine mist that you stand in, you know, there in the mist, and you almost breathe it in, it's so beautiful. And then you have your night dew with the kehau, and most people refer to it as kehau nani, which is my daughter's name, by the way. And it's a beautiful dew drops.
Okay, I think you pass. Anyway, I thought about that one, I thought with you on the Water Commission and how appropriate it is. I think, obviously, you have a cultural background and appreciation, and how we work out our solutions in water issues in a pono way is certainly what we need you to help with. So I really appreciate that you're up for this. I know I've been knocking on the mayor's door, get these commissions filled, so I'm really glad, moving forward. And I just want to underscore, he mentioned the nature park, that he has been a great asset and a great leader on that, as well as for the Waimea Trails and Greenways, which we're still working on and hopefully will be established sooner than later. So, thank you, I urge your support.
Thank you, Ms. Willie and Ms. Poindexter.
Yeah, congratulations, and I'd like to say that I know that they will be very happy to have you, especially with your knowledge and experience, you know, being on the county council. And I look forward to possibly even talking with you about the issues we're having with water in the Waimea area, at the lookout and not having county water accessible there, and no fire hydrants for those people in that area. And it is one of the, it is the second most visited spot here on Hawaii Island. So I have concerns about water in that area, but thank you, and having that, again, that experience will be very valuable. Aloha.
Thank you. Ms. David?
Aloha, Mr. Ilarianov, and good to see you again. I want to also congratulate you and aloha you for coming forward for this commission. I believe your cultural roots to this island, your experiences as a police officer during a period of time, that you've experienced growth that we've all had from the sixties through the present. And what I'm excited about is that you know the importance and the value of water in our cultural aspect and how it relates to now. And I really think that's a valuable trait to have, and I congratulate you and I support your nomination. Aloha.
Thank you, Ms. David. There's one thing about, I'm sure you understand it, you know it, but the old folks named this area here as Kahawai Ole, saying there's no streams. And when you look Maupassant, all the rain that's happening up there, and you live in an area that has no streams, it must have been fascinating for people to say, how come? Where does the water go? But they knew, the water was out of the ground and comes out in the ocean. Thank you.
Mahalo. Mr. Chung.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Leningrad, aloha. You know, each of these commissions that we are asked to confirm members to, are important to those people in various segments of the community. But from a global standpoint, really, we have to agree that the Water Commission is probably one of the most important. And I'm so glad that you've been nominated by the mayor, and it looks like you're going to have an overwhelming confirmation here, Leningrad. You know, I got to say, I've worked with this man for four years on the county council. This was, you know, over ten years ago. And he never failed to amaze me, like today, you know, all this Hawaiian stuff that he's talking about. He never really, you know, led on at the time, you know, his knowledge of Hawaiianana and the language. He's just a very humble man. I believe that his skill set is perfect for not only the Water Commission, but probably any commission on the county. He's a humble, as I said, individual, intelligent. I never knew that he was such a great writer until I saw all of these letters to the editor. He's a fantastic writer. And, you know, I just have the utmost respect for this gentleman. I mean, I really do. And I wanted to say that, you know, to all of you and to Leningrad. And, you know, just tangentially, in response to Gregor's question of the previous nominee, fourteen years ago, had two more years, yeah, Leningrad? Two more years of life to the landfill in Hilo.
Right.
That was fourteen years ago. So that's a good question, actually. But, you know, congratulations, Leningrad. I really do. I love this man. Great gentleman.
Thank you, Mr. Chung. If any of you thought so highly of me, I wouldn't let you buy me lunch more often.
Thank you, Mr. Chung. Ms. Yoff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I wanted to say also, thank you very much for coming forward to serve on the Water Board. And as Mr. Chung stated, I was thinking too, that your skill set, and especially having served on the county council, will be very valuable. Knowing just parliamentary procedure and meeting protocol and all of that is one thing, plus your deep knowledge of the culture and how important water is, is probably the main thing. But I just wanted to say thank you as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Yoff. Ms. Poindexter.
Just really quick, I forgot to say that I remember coming before you when you sat on the council when I came to testify once, and I just have to say, you have not aged at all.
You're kinder than I thought you were.
Thank you, Ms. Poindexter. Any other discussion? Okay, just wanted to say I fully support your nomination. I was on one of the commissions, the Burial Council, with you for a little while, and it was great to be on the council with you with your depth of knowledge and your experience in this community. It really helped me as a novice, basically, to learn from you. So I really appreciated that and your skill set on that commission, it helped me. So mahalo for everything that you do, mahalo for your years of community service, and looking forward to working with you in the future. You know, this is, as Mr. Chung said, I mean, I can't say it any better, this commission is extremely important. And so a big mahalo. I also want to go off on Ms. Willie. My dad's name is Kehaulani, and my sister is named, I wish Auntie Malu'i or Auntie Elizabeth was still here, she actually named my sister Vaihu'ilani, which is raindrops from heaven, so it's another different form of water and rain. So just wanted to bring that up. It kind of sparked something in my mind. But looking forward to working with you, and mahalo for serving.
Thank you.
All in favor of the nomination of Mr. Leningrad Ilarianov to the Water Board, please say aye. Any opposed? That's eight ayes, motion passes. Mahalo, congratulations. If we could shake your hand. Okay, we are coming out of recess. And if it's okay with the council members, we have the administration for environmental management. Environmental management is inside the audience, so I'd like to take a few of their bills. I think they might be here for Bill 50. I could be wrong, but we can just go ahead with that one. Bill 43 and 49. So, Mr. Clerk, if we could start with Bill 50.
Bill 50 amends ordinance number 14-81 as amended the operating budget for the County of Hawaii for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2015. Appropriates revenues in the state grants abandoned motor vehicle tires account $45,000 and appropriates the same to the abandoned motor vehicle tires. Funds will be used towards abandoned motor vehicle tire disposal fees and to assist programs that promote the removal of these tires. Introduced by Ms. Eoff.
Ms. Eoff?
Move to approve Bill 50.
It's been moved by Ms. Eoff, seconded by Ms. David. Any discussion?
Yes, there's some one there from environmental management.
Yep. And there's also a companion resolution, just an FYI.
Greg, could you just introduce yourself?
Yeah, good morning. Greg Goodell, County of Hawaii Soil Waste Division Chief.
Okay, chief. So on the, on the, this is a state grant, and is that something that we can expect every year? And is this the amount that you would expect it to be or would want?
So just to clarify, the amount that is being allocated by the state is up to $45,000. So that doesn't mean that the County of Hawaii is eligible to receive the entire amount. What we've, what we've done is we've gone to the state and essentially requested that the county be eligible to receive anything that wasn't utilized in the previous fiscal year, and also essentially try and position ourselves for the ability to utilize any money that the other counties don't utilize. So essentially, we want to be in a position where if the other counties don't request any of this tire money, that we would be able to request the balance or potentially be eligible for the entire amount. But if the other counties were to request funding from this amount of money that was put forward by DOH, they would also be in competition for that money. Right now, there hasn't been anybody requesting this money. So that's why we're putting ourselves in a position where we would be eligible for that money.
And is this, you said Department of Health, is it though coming from any federal money, or is this all state money that's in this allocation, the origin?
The best of my knowledge, it's coming from the state of Hawaii. I don't know if there's any federal pass-through money, but that's, the state would need to answer that question. But as far as I know, it's state money.
And can we, so this is something that we've, otherwise, we don't have any fund for tires. Otherwise, we would be supporting this ourselves, the county?
Well, just again, to clarify, this, we have, we deal, we manage tires that come in illegally dumped within our own facilities. The purpose of this money is primarily for places where tires are illegally dumped out in, like rural areas of the county. And what it's designed for, there was a tire task force that was put together, trying to put together recommendations on ways to clean up some of these areas. And people came from all over the state to, you know, give recommendations. And this money was put forward, but, you know, there was, there was a lot of feeling like this was just kind of touching the tip of the iceberg in terms of being able to tackle some of these issues. But what we're hoping is that from our end, the county, you know, County Hawaii's end, is that we would be able to utilize some of this money for some of the programs that exist now, the community-based cleanup programs. So that's, that's what we would be intending to put this money toward, would be the community-based cleanup programs for the tires. All too often, people will go out and they'll do, for instance, the Matson Cleanup Program that some of you may be familiar with. And they'll bring tires back, but there won't be an outlet for disposal of those tires. Because we, the county, cannot accept them within our program because we are only able to manage the tires that come in that are illegally dumped. So the funding that's put forward by the state would allow for the tires that might come in on these community-based cleanups to be managed. So that's what we're hoping for.
Okay. I really appreciate your explanation. And now, in terms of, you said the county doesn't, it manages the program, but we don't accept tires. Could you just run through what, how the public or how we do handle tires? And is there someone that we have a contract with to handle tires? So when someone goes to a transfer station and says, and here's my tire, where do I put it? What do you say?
First, we tell them we don't take tires. So we tell them to take them back to the tire retailer that they purchased the tire from. Tires are not allowed at any transfer stations or landfill within County Hawaii. So if you purchase a tire from a tire retailer, the tire retailer is supposed to take that tire back from you. It's not an option. They have to take that tire back. They can't let you take it home with you. And that's actually something that the county will be doing an education program with the tire retailers to educate the retailers that that is not an option, that giving the tire back to their customer is not an option. They must accept that tire. Matter of fact, there's a fee that's being paid by the customer for that tire. So that's the first thing we would tell somebody if they brought it to a transfer station, is that they're not allowed to bring it to that transfer station. Unfortunately, we have people that will come during times of the day that we may not have somebody there to tell them that, and in which case we end up bringing those tires back to a collection point. And we have a contractor who manages those tires. Because inevitably, we're going to wind up with people that, you know, either try and sneak the tires in the load when there may not be somebody, you know, looking, whatever. And the bottom line is, the county gets stuck managing those tires. So yes, we have a contractor that manages those tires and, you know, disposes of the tires appropriately.
Yeah. Tires has been an area that we've had problems with, where people have gotten them into the landfill, and then we end up dealing with EPA or otherwise in terms of disallowing it. So is there some reason why we don't have some facility where, say, somebody buys a car from somebody else, they have no idea where the tires are? If we only require the tire seller who provided them, a lot of people, I could think, wouldn't even have any idea where those tires were purchased from. So is there some reason why we, other than it's just costly to not deal with tires? I just wonder, I think that's why so many of them are ending up in gullies, is when, you know, the transfer station says, we don't take them, and then the person heads off to where they want to use their truck again and tosses the tire into the gully. So anyway, I don't know whether you or Bobby Jean, we could discuss this further, but if you could just respond a little bit to that question.
Well, there are, there are tire disposal companies here on Hawaii Island. And what we do is, when we get those phone calls with folks saying, I have these tire, I got a, you know, vacant lot, and somebody dumped tires on it, we'll direct them to those private businesses that manage those tires. So it's not that there isn't an outlet, it's just that there are some folks that don't want to pay that money, which is why we end up getting stuck with them getting dumped at our sites, because we get folks that don't want to pay for that. But, you know, the bottom line is, it's a service that's being provided, and there's a cost that comes with any service that's provided. So, you know, whether you're a private landowner that gets tires dropped on your land, it's still a cost to you to take it to one of these businesses that manages these tires.
Okay. I guess the other alternative would be for us to charge something. But anyway, I'll let it go at that. I just appreciate your explaining the situation.
Thank you, Ms. Willie. Other discussion, council members? Okay, hearing or seen none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That's eight ayes. I think Mr. Palaika is there. Okay. Sorry, I couldn't see you on the screen. Motion passes. And then the companion resolution, Mr. Clerk, Resolution 186-15.
Resolution 186-15 authorizes the office of the mayor to enter into an agreement with the State of Hawaii Department of Health, DOH, pursuant to Hawaii Statute Section 46-7, for a grant to mitigate the issue of illegally dumped tires throughout the County of Hawaii. Authorizes $45,000 from the state's DOH to the county to be used towards abandoned motor vehicle tire disposal fees and to assist programs that promote the removal of these tires. Introduced by Ms. Eoff.
Ms. Eoff?
Move to approve Resolution 186-15.
Do you have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Eoff, seconded by Ms. Poindexter. Any discussion? Okay, hearing or seen none. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That is two, four, seven ayes. Miss, seven ayes. Ms. David is outside of the room.
Okay, now we can go to Bill 43, which is on the last, one of the last pages. Page eight.
Bill 43 amends ordinance number 14-81 as amended the operating budget for the County of Hawaii for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2015. Increases revenues in the transfer from general fund account $10,000 and appropriates the same to the recycling programs, county other current expense account. Grant to recycle Hawaii Zero Waste Programs, District 9. Funds will be used to support, initiate, and facilitate zero waste programs at District 9 Public and Charter Schools. Introduced by Ms. Eoff.
Ms. Eoff?
Move to approve Bill 43.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Eoff, seconded by Ms. Willie. Any discussion? Ms. Willie?
Yeah. Could you just explain a little bit, this is a Department of Water Supply grant, and for the purposes of establishing a wellhead protection program.
Ms. Willie, this is Bill 43.
Oh, am I reading the wrong one? And maybe I'm reading the wrong one.
It's on the...
Oh, okay. Yeah, I am reading the wrong one. Sorry about that.
No problem.
Okay, so Bill 43 is mine. Okay. Well, I urge your support. I thought we were doing theirs. Okay, this is, so I'm using these funds of the contingency relief funds for promoting zero waste programs at the 10 public and charter schools within my district. And I previously gave money for the school garden program, so this is sort of will tie in. Noah and Sam will be, Noah Dodd, who came and spoke, and Sam Robinson will be heading this up. It will include working with them and helping to get a plan for each individual school. Each one has a different circumstance, and then trying to put together a report that would also be helpful to any other school that would want to pursue this. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Willie. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing or seen none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's seven ayes. Motion passes. Okay, Mr. Clerk, Bill 49?
Bill 49 amends ordinance number 14-81 as amended the operating budget for the County of Hawaii for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2015. Appropriates revenues in the state grants wellhead protection program grant account $60,000 and appropriates the same to the wellhead protection program grant account. Funds will be provided to Department of Environmental Management to advertise and conduct household hazardous waste collection events around the island. Introduced by Ms. Eoff.
Ms. Eoff?
Move to approve Bill 49.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Eoff, seconded by Ms. Willie. Any discussion?
Maybe I'll pick up where I left off before you corrected me. Okay. Okay, so just to understand, this is funds from the Water Department and for wellhead protection, and we're using them for household waste collection. So I just, if you could just explain a little bit, so the public understands what's going on here.
Okay, yeah, again, Greg Goodell, County of Hawaii Soil Waste Division Chief. The money, and again, I'll thank the folks at Water Supply for coming to us and letting us know that they had this money that would be available for a program like this. And through that collaboration, we were able to get this money that will be able to be utilized for our household hazardous waste program that's coming up here in June. There's going to be one in Kona, one in Hilo. The money must be used within this fiscal year, so time is of the essence with this. And so, again, when they saw that there wasn't something that was, you know, slated for use, they came and we said, yes, we definitely would be interested in this money, and it will go to a good purpose. Because obviously, as we've said, you know, if it doesn't go down the drain, it goes down the rubbish chute. So it, you know, these types of things protect both things, the drinking water, the groundwater, and the area, the landfill. We don't want things going, you know, where they don't belong. So that's where this household hazardous waste program is so valuable to the county. But again, thanks to Water Supply for making this money available as that pass-through.
Well, I appreciate your department, you know, finding out, and both in this case and your previous bill, where we've been able to utilize funds that otherwise we would not have. I think this is not adding any additional programs, if I'm correct, or, I know, I mean, the one thing on hazardous wastes is, I think, like in Waimea, you only do it once a year. And certainly, it would be great if we could have that available a little more frequently. And I don't know if you see any prospect of that, or finding some additional source of money that we could make it, some of the hazardous waste program a little bit more frequent than just once a year in certain places, and none a year in other, and twice a year, and I think it's Kona and Hilo. So I don't know, Director or Deputy, you have any thoughts on that? Just is this adding to any additional programs, or we, is this enabling us to fund the ones we already had scheduled?
Well, this doesn't add any additional collection events for this current fiscal year. As you know, the current fiscal year will be over at the end of June. So again, time is of the essence, because the events are already scheduled. So the reality is, there wouldn't be any ability for us to schedule anything additional. This just goes to offset money that we would have spent that, you know, given the year that we've had with the hurricane and the lava flow, we've had to redirect a lot of money to a lot of different places. So money like this is very welcome to us, considering all the things we've had to redirect throughout this fiscal year. So in terms of providing the additional service, one thing, the folks that manage our household hazardous waste program keep a very close eye on the amounts of materials that are brought in from the various events. And, you know, again, our job is to try and And, you know, again, our job is to try and manage the money that's entrusted to us in the best we can and make sure that, that it's going to the most effective uses. So, when, when we get to that point where we feel like there's such a high quantity of materials coming into any one collection event, then the recommendation would be possibly to increase the frequency of the, the collection events. However, at this time, the, the amounts that have been coming into these events have stayed pretty, pretty static. Hilo and Kona overwhelmingly gets the most amount of materials brought in. Given the population centers, that's not, that's not surprising. But, but we do, you know, rely on our folks within our department to make those kind of recommendations. If they feel like we're having an area that is in need of additional service, then those recommendations come forward to us so that we can budget accordingly.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate your explanation.
Thank you, Ms. Willie. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing or seen none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? That's eight ayes. Motion passes. Malo. Okay, we'll just go to the top of the agenda, Mr. Clerk. I don't think there's any other ones that we need to take out of order. So, Communication 312.
Communication 312, request by Councilmember Margaret Willie to provide a report of her attendance at the Hawaii County Democratic Convention pursuant to Hawaii Statute Section 92-2.5E from Councilmember Margaret Willie dated May 1, 2015.
Ms. Willie, we may now have a motion to file Communication 312.
So moved.
You have a second. It's been moved by Ms. Willie, seconded by Ms. David. Ms. Willie, you may go right ahead.
Okay, so this is like a sunshine law report. Since there were quite a number of us there, I thought it appropriate to file something and included for informational purpose the sections that we, where more than a quorum were present or, but were not attending and any meeting altogether. So, I think it's pretty straightforward. Just that there were various panels and including agriculture and energy and one on intergovernmental panel that both Councilmember Iligon and myself were on. So, if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer. I don't think any specific board business current or in the immediate future is, was discussed, but that's it.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Willie. Mr. Iligon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to have our Corporation Council come up. I just wanted to ask, so is this our procedure from this point forward on to introduce or file a communication? I just wanted to get a confirmation.
Good morning, Chair Kanuha, Members of the Council, Molly Stevens, Corporation Council. You're asking if the procedure is to do a report when more than one but less than a quorum attends an informational meeting where matters related to board business are discussed?
Correct.
Yes, that should be the procedure that's required by the sunshine law.
Is it only related to the council member who attended? Does it also include the staff if they were present?
Oh, no. It, staff? Okay, well, the law specifically speaks to board members, yeah.
Okay, the reason why is, the reason why I'm asking that question is, there were staff of other council members present? That's not mentioned in this communication?
Yes, it is.
And I wanted to make sure that what should be the process should... That's why I want to get your legal advice.
Can I say something? It does include, I mean, to the best of my knowledge, I included the staff members, for example, in the first sentence, Councilmember Iligon and staff members from the office of Councilmember Chung and Councilmember Onishi were in attendance, and so it went through. But I, I'm glad you brought this up, because I was unclear and I inquired, I was told I should be not just the members, but also including the staff members, but...
Thank you, Ms. Willie. I, I got the request from Ms. Willie and I just wanted to be as cautious as possible and just to, you know, say that this was gonna, this was appropriate for what happened in, at this meeting. So, I thought just to be as cautious and just say whatever happened there and whoever was there present. So, I thought that was an appropriate use of that, of this communication.
I should say that I did consult with the Corporation Council beforehand, because we were jockeying a number of more than a quorum were attending at one point or another. So, we were orchestrating, okay, Ms. Poindexter's leaving at, for the afternoon or who's in the morning. And so, I appreciated that assistance.
I still have the floor, right?
Yep.
May I get the legal advice from our lawyer?
I'm not sure if I am entirely clear on what your question is. You're asking, so just backing up, the particular provision of the sunshine law permits board members to attend an informational meeting or presentation or matters related to board business are going to be discussed, and that can be more than one member but less than a quorum. And you're asking, if I understand correctly, if that requirement or limitation extends to staff members?
Correct.
I don't really want to go as far as saying that there's a hard and fast rule that it does. I mean, the law speaks to board members. Potentially, if you're sending a staff member, maybe as your proxy, maybe you could get into a situation where it seems like in complying with the spirit of the law, it would be best to treat those as, as board members. But I, I really don't think it's necessary to go as far as to say that you should always view a staff member as essentially the same as a board member. I mean, the, the way the law reads, it speaks to board members.
Okay, with that, I just want to say in spite, in spite of the spirit of the law, I believe Councilmember Palaika sent Jordan Onaga as representing him for the Puna District 5, and it's not mentioned in this communication. And I just want the public to know that she was present, and of course, there was no violation of any sunshine.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Palaika.
Yes, thank you, Gregor. Yes, I just wanted to mention, I did have my staff member, Jordan Onaga, represent our office at the Democratic Convention, because I was unable to attend two 12 family businesses I had in Maui. So, if that could be included on the record, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. And, you know, I think that's kind of the spirit of it. We can discuss what happened and that's fine. Ms. Willie.
Yeah, just thank you for correcting that. I was trying to keep track of who was where at each of the different sessions. So, again, thank you. I, I do think that the question though, that Councilmember Iligon raised is important, because, you know, is board members staff? So, that if there's no problem there where there's, if we had more than a quorum, if we had less than a quorum of board members, but more than a quorum if you were to include board members staff? So, that's not a violation when it's staff members present? So, I, it was my misunderstanding. I'm just trying to get clarification on that.
I would not call that a violation, no. I mean, the, the permitted interaction language, it speaks specifically to board members.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you, Ms. Willie. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing or seen none, all in favor filing Communication 312, say aye. Any opposed? That's eight ayes. Motion passes. Okay, thank you. Resolution 166.
Resolution 166-15 accepts the dedication of road lot 12.5 feet wide right-of-way, being a portion of allotment 14 of Holo'aloa 1 and 2, Partition Malka Section, being a portion of Royal Patent 4475, Land Commission Award 7713, upon a 43 to Victoria Kamamalu, Tapsimat Key 7-6-004059, situated at Holo'aloa 1 and 2, District of North Kona, Island of Hawaii, from Millicent A. Grant, successor trustee of the Lilian U. Towata Revocable Living Trust dated January 24, 1999. The road lot contains an area of 1,657 square feet and will be used for public road purposes. Introduced by Ms. Poindexter.
Ms. Poindexter.
Motion to approve Resolution 166-15.
It's been moved by Ms. Poindexter, seconded by Ms. Eoff. Any discussion? Okay, I think I got what I needed to from the last meeting, and I don't need to go into a discussion about this, but I was just curious, but, okay. Hearing or seen none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's eight ayes. Motion passes. Okay, next item, Resolution 187.
Resolution 187-15 authorizes the abandonment and disposition of a portion of Puoko Road situated at Puoko, District of South Kohala, County State of Hawaii, being Tapsimat Key 66002, portion to the State of Hawaii Department of Land and Natural Resources, DLNR, Division of State Parks, authorizes the abandonment of parcel C, measuring approximately 6.665 acres, to the State DLNR for incorporation into Apuna State Park. Introduced by Ms. Eoff.
Ms. Eoff.
Move to approve Resolution 187-15.
It's been moved by Ms. Eoff, seconded by Ms. David. Any discussion? Okay, hearing or seen none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? That's eight ayes. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, next item, Mr. Clerk.
Resolution 188-15 authorizes the acceptance of a donation of a digital video recorder and cameras to the Department of Parks and Recreation, donated by the Keokahua Community Association with a combined value of $4,474.97 to provide video surveillance at Kauana Nakoa Gym and Hualani Park in Keokahua. Introduced by Ms. Eoff.
Ms. Eoff.
Move to approve Resolution 188-15.
Moved by Ms. Eoff, seconded by Ms. David. Any discussion? Okay, hearing or seen none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Eight ayes. Motion passes. Next item.
Resolution 189-15 transfers appropriates and appropriation out and from the designated fund account and credits same to a designated fund account to cover unanticipated expenses in the Hawaii State Association of Counties, National Association of Counties, HSAK NACO account. Transfers appropriates $5,000 out and from the Clerk Council Services other current expenses miscellaneous charges account and credits the same to the HSAK NACO Travel Conference's Travel Conference account. Funds be used for the 2015 NACO Western Interstate Region Conference held in May and monthly HSAK Executive Board meetings for the remainder of the fiscal year 2014, 2015. Introduced by Mr. Onishi.
We have a motion to approve Resolution 189 and file, all remaining communications.
So moved.
You have a second. It's been moved by Mr. Palaika, seconded by Ms. David. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Palaika.
Okay, the purpose of these funds are for re-adding funds that have been expended already for, and one of the expenses being considered is for WIR attendance, which I'm leaving for today. I have expended the funds already, and I think it's an, it's an important event, the networking that we gain, not only with our county colleagues from Kauai, Maui, which we do, I think is very valuable asset for our county. But more so, also, I've, I've spent the money already, so I would appreciate having the opportunity to be reimbursed. I mean, I don't mind. I can pay for it. It's all good, but it'd be nice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palaika. Ms. Willie.
My fellow counsel's giggling next to me, so I have to pull myself together here. Let me just ask you, so are you on the, you're on the board now? Can I inquire of Councilmember Palaika? You're on the, the Western Interstate Regional Board? And do they consult with you about the agenda for the upcoming? Is that within the scope of your responsibilities?
Yes, there is itinerary of events and also discussions with the board. The board meeting is tomorrow.
Okay, and on, in terms of, I'm on this Agriculture and Rural Affairs Steering Committee, and so have you, did they discuss with you what was going to come up on, on the different panels and who would be speaking?
There, there is an itinerary. If the public is interested in seeing what, it's on the NACO website. I do plan to attend as many of those as...
Okay, the only reason I, you know, what raised my concern is when I saw that it's the, one of the lead panelists is a, the new head of the Hawaii Crop Improvement Association, which is the biotech lobbying arm, and that there's, I don't have any problem if they want to have a lobbyist on that side as a lead speaker, but I feel that there should be balance, especially where three counties have raised concerns about the GMO issues. So, anyway, just, I'm always wondering, just in terms of, I know where is NACO, but I do have general problems with HSAK and moving forward and what the cost is and whether really we're losing out on other opportunities that we could use that money for, arguing along the same lines that Councilmember Iligon argued yesterday, how we're using that money and how it's used. So, this is another, this is 5,000 in addition to, I forget what the total budget was, but many thousands of dollars, I think, for HSAK. Do you remember offhand what the total budget of HSAK is? Anyway, I'll let that go, but I do realize, I do want to say, in terms of the funds, that Councilmember Onishi did move some funds in a previous time into the contingency relief fund. So, I think where we're ending up with a shortfall here, it's appropriate to pass this. So, I urge passage. At the same time, I continue to rattle along with my concerns about HSAK. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Willie, for your comments. And yeah, it was, you know, now we have another additional member that's going to be using this account, so unanticipated expenses, and so I appreciate everybody. Hopefully, we can all support this and move it, get it passed. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing or seen none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's eight ayes. Motion passes. Thank you, councilmembers. Okay, next item, Mr. Clerk.
Bill 48 names a county park and recreational facility at Kohonaiki, District of North Kona, County of Hawaii, and amends Chapter 15, Article 8, Section 15-68.1 of the Hawaii County Code 1983, 2005 Edition as amended relating to the parks and recreational facility schedule. Names the beach park located, located at Kohonaiki, North Kona, the Kohonaiki Beach Park. Introduced by Ms. Eoff.
Ms. Eoff.
Move to approve Bill 48.
Motion by Ms. Eoff, seconded by Ms. David. Ms. Eoff.
Thank you very much, councilmembers, and I know we spoke a little bit about this in committee, but I just wanted to let you know that last weekend, we celebrated 20th anniversary of a keke surf for the earth contest at the beach, and it was... anniversary of a keke surf-for-the-earth contest at the beach. And it was a wonderful day, a wonderful collaboration of work on the part of the county, the community, and the landowner, or the developer. And it just showed what a partnership like that can achieve. So, it was an exceptional event, and everybody contributed to it. So, I just wanted to say how happy I am to be able to amend our county code right now to put the Konaiki Beach Park officially onto the schedule of county parks. I'm honored to be able to do it today.
Thank you, Ms. Eoff. Any other discussion? Okay. Hearing or seen none. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? That's eight ayes, motion passes. Okay, Mr. Clerk, Bill 51?
Bill 51 amends ordinance number 14-81 as amended, the operating budget for the County of Hawaii for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2015. Increases revenues, the state grants Department of Health Tobacco Sting Grant account $12,000, and appropriates the same to the Department of Health Tobacco Sting Grant. Funds be used to prevent the sale of tobacco to minors. Introduced by Ms. Eoff.
Ms. Eoff.
Move to approve Bill 51.
Motion by Ms. Eoff, seconded by Ms. David. Any discussion?
I guess I would just like to state that the grant is for additional funding and extends for 12 more months, so that police can enforce sales to minors.
Thank you, Ms. Eoff. Any other discussion? Okay. Hearing or seen none. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? That's eight ayes, motion passes. Okay, Mr. Clerk, Bill 39?
Bill 39 amends Chapter 14, Article 13 of the Hawaii County Code 1983-2005 Edition as amended, relating to soliciting for money or objects of value. Amends multiple definitions and what constitutes a privated act to expand and more clearly define First Amendment protections for solicitation-related activity. Introduced by Mr. Kanuha by request.
We have a motion to approve Bill 39.
Take it.
Moved by Ms. David, seconded by Ms. Eoff. Any discussion? Okay. Hearing or seen none. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? That's eight ayes, motion passes. Mr. Clerk, Bill 40, Draft 3.
Bill 40, Draft 3, amends Chapter 15, Articles 2 and 3 of the Hawaii County Code 1983-2005 Edition as amended, relating to parks and recreation. Amends various sections to expand a more clearly defined First Amendment protection for solicitation-related activity at county parks and recreational facilities. Introduced by Mr. Kanuha by request.
We have a motion to approve Bill 40, Draft 3. We have a second. Motion by Ms. David, seconded by Ms. Eoff. Any discussion? Hearing or seen none. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Eight ayes, motion passes. Mr. Clerk, Bill 41?
Bill 41 amends ordinance number 14-81 as amended, the operating budget for the County of Hawaii for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2015. Appropriates revenues in the federal 2015 block grant account, $2,465,271, and the block grant program income account, $215,925.52, and appropriates the same to the following accounts: Hilo Adult Daycare Center, Foundation Insight Improvement, $700,000; West Hawaii Emergency Shelter Kitchen Renovations, $255,000; Habitat for Humanity Affordable Workforce Housing Land Acquisition, $132,000; Bohua Fire Station Wild Brush Truck Acquisition, $235,000; West Hawaii Homeless Micro Housing Unit Site Improvements, $434,771; Kamakua Nui Mutual Self-Help Housing Land Acquisition, $200,000; Kona Domestic Abuse Shelter Kitchen Renovations, $86,500; Residential Emergency Repair Program, $237,925.52; and Administration Planning and Fair Housing, $400,000. Introduced by Ms. Eoff.
Ms. Eoff.
Move to approve Bill 41.
It's been moved by Ms. Eoff, seconded by Ms. David. Any other, any discussion? Okay. Hearing or seen none. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? That's eight ayes, motion passes. Mr. Clerk, Bill 42?
Bill 42 amends ordinance number 14-81 as amended, the operating budget for the County of Hawaii for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2015. Appropriates revenues in the federal 2015 home program account, $2,852,059, and the home grant program income account, $69,941.21, and appropriates the same to the following accounts: tenant-based rental assistance, $666,178.21; Haleuluhoi, 1 and 2 apartments, $400,000; Mahuli Heights Senior Neighborhood, 2, $669,287; Habitat for Humanity Affordable Workforce Housing, $600,000; Kumakuah Self-Help Housing, increment 2B, $160,000; Micro Housing First Project, $276,427; and Office of Housing Community Development Administration, $150,108. Introduced, Ms. Eoff.
Ms. Eoff.
Move to approve Bill 42.
Motion by Ms. Eoff, seconded by Ms. David. Any discussion? Hearing or seen none. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? That's eight ayes, motion passes. I'm pretty sure we got through everything, Mr. Clerk. Okay. Can I have a motion to adjourn? It's been moved by Ms. Eoff, seconded by Ms. David. All in favor say aye. We, thank you very much. We are adjourned.